We're to call the order Monday, May 20th. Budget Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Will everybody please stand as Councilman Holman leaves us in invocation?
Let's bow heads. Oh precious Father, thank you so much for what you have done for us. Thank you for allowing everyone to arrive here safe and sound, heaven and father, and as they leave this meeting this evening, allow them to leave and go to their destination soundly. We ask heaven and father that all budgets are done decently in order, and we just thank you for the privilege of working with the school systems and school boards this evening. We ask this in your son Jesus' name, amen.
First on the agenda is the budget presentation for Dorchester School District Four. Please come forward. I know you guys have been busy today and tied up.
Always an exciting day.
It's an exciting day in DD4, huh?
Absolutely. I will say, everybody did an awesome job today. Got all of our boys and girls home safely, and that's the most important thing. So, I don't want to take a lot of your time. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here in front of you. Before we get started, I want to thank our finance team. Mr. Saunders, who's going to be up here presenting in a few minutes, but then we got Ms. Creed and Ms. Hutto, who are here, and then our board members, Ms. Hughes, Mr. Folk, and Dr. Jenkins. What I can say with our budget, it's simple. We try to be as responsible with our money as we can. We want to make sure we hit our priorities, making sure our teachers are taken care of, making sure our students are taken care of, and make sure our programs are taken care of. And so when we look at Dorchester Four, we'll start with athletics. We've been solid in our athletics for years. We want to continue that, that positive momentum in the right direction. As our enrollment or our participation in our programs increases, right now we have about 350, 400 of our 700 students at Woodland High School participate in our high school sports programs, and about the same percentages in our middle schools, which is outstanding. But as numbers go up, so does the cost. And then when we get into middle school, our middle school programs are the same way. As we all know, we're in the process of consolidating our two middle schools, Harleyville Ridgeville Middle School, St. George Middle School, and Macon-Woodland Middle School. We're getting close. Every day we get a little bit closer. We wanted to be there back in December, but we are getting there. We're close. But as we consolidate those two schools and make them one, building out our programs to make sure our students are successful when we hit the ground running in August. Academically, we want to make sure we're continuing to put a focus on streamlined instruction, make sure our programs are consistent across all of our schools, and that they build upon each other, and that we don't have segmentation going on where everybody's starting new every level of the way. One of those pieces is, we've brought into account, and you'll see it when Mr. Saunders presents, we have the new pay scale from the state in there, starting our first-year teachers at $47,000 and then all the way through. But what I will say is, even though that budget or that pay scale targets our newer teachers to the field and then our more veteran teachers, we're missing a gap in the middle. And we're having a lot of conversation and talks about how we can make sure we're targeting that group in the middle, five years to 25 years of experience, because that is just as important to us. We've had a very loyal group of teachers and staff in our district, and when the opportunity presents itself, we want to make sure we reward them in salaries, because they certainly deserve that. And the same time, with our budget, is just making sure we're being as responsible as possible. We could easily say, we're going to give an increase of this much money, and it's going to pull our money out of our fund balance. That's not a route we want to go, where a recurring cost is coming out of our fund balance. We want to make sure any costs, any recurring costs are coming out of our general operating funds. So we have those conversations, and we'll have a lot more of those conversations moving forward now that the state has fully passed that pay scale at the state level. Just to make sure we're being fair to our folks who have been great to us in DD4, our principals and our HR department along the way has been great about making sure our positions are filled. We have very few vacancies right now, which is outstanding in May. And so once we fill those last few positions, we'll be set. And again, we have to reward our teachers and our staff for the work that they've done and the loyalty they've shown us here in the district. So as you go through and as Mr. Saunders presents to you, our budget, if you have any questions, be happy to answer those, but those will be our focuses moving forward, is instructional programs, extracurricular programs, including athletics. We've had at the state and national level, board officers from Woodland High School representing our high school at the federal, at the national level, which is outstanding. We've had robotics teams from the middle school competing at the state, local, and the national level in drone flying and solar car development. And so keeping those programs going, along with our athletic programs, which for many of our students is a great outlet, a great opportunity for them moving forward in life. So, any questions before Mr. Saunders gets into the presentation?
I just want to shout out to him, he's the only superintendent I know that's also a head coach.
I don't have to go there. Thank you all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Yes, we'll just move through the PowerPoint here very quickly. Okay, let's see. Well, I must not push the right button. Which button do I push here? I'm pushing. There we go. All right, thank you very much. Yeah, this budget is based on the House Ways and Means Committee budget. There, you know, that's what our revenue is based on. There's been a couple of other, you know, the state budget process takes a while. We aren't to the end yet. They've issued a couple of other, you know, versions, but it's all been within $100,000, give or take, where this version is, so we feel very comfortable with this. The, when the final comes out, we don't anticipate any great changes. And the minimum teacher salary scale dictated by the state, and this year is same as most years, when they come out with the teacher salary scale on the front end, it very rarely changes. And so, you know, and that's a good thing, because everybody starts planning on that. So this year, the minimum teacher salary scale, as Mr. Beckwith stated earlier, increased $4,500 from a bachelor step zero to a starting salary of $47,000. The current year for DD4, for starting salary for fiscal year '24 is $42,500. If we jump to the next slide, that's just some ADM data, average daily membership fiscal year '24 to '45 day, 2022, and the '45 day and 135th day of fiscal year '23 is $1,934. So we're seeing some growth, a little recovery from the decline that happened after the pandemic. Moving to this next slide is discussion of the fund balance. The fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, about $5.9 million of fund balance. That's about 19% of general fund expenditures. GFOA recommends about 16.7%. We feel that we're just now getting fund balance to a level that we're comfortable with. It's very important to maintain a strong fund balance, as you're probably aware of, in case you have emergency situations. Also, it helps minimize or avoid tax anticipation notes, and also it helps with your bond rating as well. So we're really proud of that, that we were able to that level, and hope to maintain that. Revenue update. This budget was prepared using the House Ways and Means projections. Local property taxes are undergoing reassessment, and fiscal year '25 projections have been received from the county auditor. Local fee and lieu of taxes is expected to increase in the future, and we're working with county officials on updated projections. And a detailed list of revenue accounts with projections follows on the next slide. And once again, state revenue streams are subject to change as the state legislature moves through the state's budget process. Now this slide, if anybody really wants to, it's a detailed list of all our general fund accounts, revenue accounts, and it shows all the way back to the information to fiscal year '22. And you can see the changes from fiscal year '25 proposed budget from the fiscal year '24 amended budget in the right-hand column. The next slide is a summary that rolls everything up by local, intergovernmental, state, and then transfers. And you can see local increasing 8.3%, state 5.78%, and transfers, a slight increase there as well. And the next slide is just a graph with the representation of that, showing local revenue at 45%, state 49%, transfers 6%. So the district is equally dependent upon state and local, almost half and half funding. The teacher salary mandate, that's the main thing that drives our budget, is obviously salaries. And the state dictates the minimum salary, teacher salary schedule. And as I said, this is the one that's recommended by the Ways and Means Committee, which looks like it's going to stick. School districts are required to meet the state minimum salary schedule. The amount that school districts pay in excess of the state minimum scale is called local salary supplement. In all districts throughout the state, most of them do pay more than the state minimum. If you look at the next slide, this is actually the information that we received from the state. That is the state minimum teacher salary schedule, and it shows the increase for the year for each of the five categories. And as Mr. Beckwith said earlier, you can see the state really focused on, you can see the larger increases at the lower step levels of the, in the brackets of the lower step levels, and, I mean, but that's, that's out of our control, that's, you know, state mandated. The state has allowed school districts to decrease the local salary supplement in their salary scales the last couple of years. The state is allowing school districts to reduce local salary supplement again for fiscal year '25 if they choose to do so. The draft fiscal year '25 Dorchester Four teacher salary schedule displayed on the next slide does not provide a reduction in the local salary supplement. Previously, before, when EFA was, you know, still in place, and before they started really raising the local, the teacher minimum salary schedule, they would not allow districts to, once you put money in the local supplement, you could not decrease it. But since they are radically really raising salaries, they will allow school districts to reduce the local salary supplement, but it's really not a good idea. Primarily, I mean, some districts are having to do it because, just because of the financial situation. But it puts you in a competitive disadvantage. The smaller districts are at a competitive disadvantage, you know, it's the have and have-nots, so to speak. And some of the districts that have a larger tax base do have, can pay teachers more. So we elected not to reduce the local salary supplement, but to try and remain competitive in the marketplace for quality teachers. And so this, this salary, this is a slide that shows, the blue is the fiscal year '24 teacher salary scale, and the green is the one that's recommended for next year. And the, the lower steps of this salary scale are actually right, if you compare that to the state minimum, they are at the state minimum. And then the, some of the upper levels do have a component of local salary supplement still in place. Okay, now moving on to expenditures. This is a summary of our expenditures by object type. You can see the various, you know, salaries and fringe benefits, obviously making up the major portion of it. The, you can see it's a 14% increase in purchase services. That's primarily due to the district in fiscal year '25 is going to use Kelly Services to provide substitutes, whereas we've been, have been providing them in-house in the past. So that's a shift, it was a reduction from salaries and fringe, and an increase in purchase services. So that's why you see that 14.82% there. And then this is just a graphic representation of those numbers, salaries and fringe, if you add those two up, are a little over 78% of the general fund budget. So that's primarily the driving factor. And this is a summary by expense category, just to give a breakdown between the different And then this is a budget reconciliation, showing the top line, the fiscal year '24 budget, amended budget, bottom line fiscal year '25 proposed budget, and the various changes that account for the increase in the budget. Primarily, once again, driven by changes in salary and fringe, and then there was an increase in health, health insurance that's also in the mix there, and a small increase in purchase services and supplies. And once again, you see there Kelly Services. You can see the numbers on that switch. Millage rate, Dorchester School District Four has not had an increase in operational millage rate since fiscal year 2006. The current millage rate is 210. Local property taxes undergoing reassessment, and the fiscal year '25 millage rate will be adjusted accordingly. The current value of a mill for operations for fiscal year '24 is approximately $58,000 Budget summary, once again, the budget's prepared using the House Ways and Means, state revenue funding projections, and county officials have provided updated add-to-law and property tax collection projections. The budget presented is balanced. The budget was $35.5 million in projected revenues and expenditures. And then there was our budget calendar. Obviously, we're here today meeting on May 20th, and tomorrow at the school board meeting is a public hearing, and the board will consider the final reading and approval of the budget. And so at that point, I'd be glad to, if there's any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, just, and forgive me if you said it, but just wanted to know what percentage of the overall budget is dedicated to personnel?
Well, yeah, it was, in general fund, I think it was like 78% with salary and fringe of the general fund budget. Now, we do have, we do spend more on salaries and fringe in our special revenue funds, like the title funds, Title I, and the other special revenue funds.
Yes, sir. That was not a trick question, by the way, just a curious question, but yes, sir.
Yes, and the general fund is approximately 78, 78.25. And if you look at that slide, the, the one with the graph, right there.
There we go.
Yeah, it shows you salaries at 53% and fringe benefits at 25.22.
Gotcha.
And for the general fund budget, once again. Now, there are additional expenditures made on salaries and fringe outside of that. A lot of the special revenue funds do pay salaries and fringe.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is a budget presentation, budget presentation from Dorchester County Career and Technical Center.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Every year, somebody on this group asks me how many times I've stood up here in front of you. This is the end of my 20th year. This is my 21st time standing in front of you, and I'm still waiting on water, Jason. That's a side note, some of you haven't been here as long as I have, but Jason knows. I'm going to say very little, because my ladies back here tell me I talk too much.
Soon as the Corps.
The Corps?
As soon as the Corps and Santee Cooper approve the meter site, you will get it. We're not the holdup anymore.
Great, that's even better news. Thank you for that.
The line is there. It's just the meter, the line has been there, it's the meter that has to be set, so we can stem off of it. And if it means anything to you, Dr. Beckwith, I mean, Superintendent Beckwith is also waiting on water.
Yes, I knew it. Elementary school down the street was waiting on water, too, and then we'll talk about sewage later. I want to thank all of you for coming out, spending time with us, coming to our meals that Bobby, as you all know, everybody in here, I'm sure knows Mr. Bear, because he's constantly cooking somewhere. I did not pay for the steaks from Mr. Beckwith at Woodland High School, just to clarify that, Bobby just cooked. But please continue to come out. Your support in being on campus with our students, as well as with our meals and our business partners means a great deal. We continue to move forward with our joint venture between the county and with the school on the fire building located at the back of the center. We now have four stories, three different rows. This is also a venture with Resonec, the old Shoah Dinko Company, so that is actually moving forward. We have a new training officer with Dorchester County Fire, as you know, and he has helped tremendously get that project moving. We have completed, if anyone in this council had told me it would take six months plus to close on property, business property, I would have said, no way. But we have closed on the little quad business buildings in front of Trolley and the storage facility, so we now own both of those parcels, and we have hired McMillan Smith &amp; Passon to start a footprint drawing and some blueprints to accommodate not only that site, but also the site in Dorchester. And that's all I've been permitted to say, so that the ladies could continue. But I will be around if you have any questions. Thank you.
Hello.
Hey.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Good, glad to hear it. All right. I'm having the same thing. Let's see here. Oh, did I, oh, I'm just too fast, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry. Don't look, don't look. There we are. So I wanted to point out a few of our highlights that we, that we had this past year. Our numbers are up again, way up. You'll see that we have just under 900 students this past year. When I started at the career school about 10 years ago, we had less than 400. And so the reason I say that is just to show you one more time that the pendulum has swung, right, has definitely swung back toward career and tech ed for students, particularly in the traditional trades. You see 439 completers this year. As I like to point out, that's only about half of the students, because the other half completed last year, right? The students come, many students come back a second year. And so we have students completing this year, about half of them, 54 inducted into National Technical Honor Society. 71 were placed to work this past year in our life program, and I will show those to you in just a second, where those students went to work. 23 students were just placed full-time. They're seniors who have graduated, and they've just been placed full-time in electricity companies through our partnership with CECA, Charleston Electrical Contractors Association. They will take just about every student that we will put out. And then 63 health science students recently completed their internships and sat for either a CNA, a PCT, or a medical assistant certification. And our largest classes are health science welding and auto tech. And so you'll see our health science students are definitely moving in the right direction. But I am not. So these are our programs and career clusters. They have not changed since last year. We haven't added any new programs since last year. Logistics and distribution is our most recent program, and she's been open for two years now. She also incorporates the CDL program as part of the logistics and distribution class. These are our new business partners that we collected this year. We actually have about 186 business partners. That was the number Laura gave me this afternoon. And so included in that 186 are these new business partners from this year. I mentioned earlier that 71 of our students have recently, or I'm sorry, this past school year, went to work. Those are the students in our life program. Those are the students who, instead of coming to us, they're generally, they are second year students, they go to work. So they came to us last year, this year, instead of coming to the career school, they earn two hours credit and a paycheck by going to work somewhere in the community. This is where we put students to work this year. This is a big deal. This is a very big deal. Skills USA is the largest organization for students who are in career and technical education. There's over 400,000 students who are members of Skills USA. It's a national organization. And two of our students from right here, two of your students from right here in Dorchester County, brought home, brought home gold at the state championship this year. Caleb Olmer brought home gold in welding. He just signed with the bid group. He's a graduate, and so he has gone, he was working at the bid group, and he just signed a contract with them, so he'll be going to work full-time for the bid group. And then Jenneth Wally won gold for aesthetics. She is going to work as soon as she graduates in May. These students will represent us. They will represent Dorchester County, they will represent South Carolina at the state competition in June in Atlanta. So it's, it's a very big deal, particularly for these, for these students to be able to go on and show off their skills nationally. So we'll keep you posted on them. I wanted to point out, just four students, I just picked four, that have recently gone to work. The reason I picked these four is because I've interviewed them in the past, and so I have their great pictures that I love. I call them, it's just me, I call them their little baby pictures, and then their grown-up pictures. So Amerian, for example, that was Amerian last year in Mr. O'Neill's class. He's gone to work at Metro Electric. He's been there for a year. So he graduated last year, and he's been at Metro Electric for a year. He did a really great online interview with them. We posted it on our social as well, but that's where he works. Trey Cook was a, he took, he took architectural design and drafting with us for two years. He actually wanted to make sure that he really had it down, and his second year, instead of going to work, he came back and did a second year with us. And he's a junior at Clemson now in the architecture program. The picture on the right, you'll, the one on, well, on my left is when he, his little baby picture, is when he's with us. The one on, on the right is, he presented a honeycomb project, it's called a honeycomb design building project, to his class at Clemson. And so that's the picture that he sent me, was when he presented his project. Shania Tucker, I think that I included Shania in last year's presentation, because she was inducted to National Technical Honor Society. She actually was a senior this year, okay? So when, the picture up there of her was her junior year. This year, her senior year, she was admitted into the pre-nursing program at Trident Tech. So while she was a senior in high school, she worked at Berkeley, Roper St. Francis Berkeley campus, 20 hours a week. She went to high school, and she took classes at Trident Tech as part of their nursing program. So she's getting ready to graduate in just a couple of weeks, and then she'll continue that program. Love that, I mean, I just love these pictures. It's like looking at a yearbook. She went to high school, and she took classes at Trident Tech as part of their nursing program. So she's getting ready to graduate in just a couple of weeks, and then she'll continue that program. Love that, I mean, I just love these pictures. It's like looking at a yearbook. And then finally, Michael, some of y'all might know Michael, he works for the Sheriff's Department. He completed our program in 2020, but you have to be twenty-one years old to actually go into work in law enforcement. And um, so that was Michael's picture on the left when he was a student with us. And now, um, he came back and spoke with our law enforcement students a couple of months ago. And so we were able to get this picture of him when he uh, came back to speak with our students. So those are just four students I wanted to point out to you that um, that we're very proud of. We have a lot more than that. I could've, you know, could've taken thirty minutes of time with you going over um, what our students are doing now, but I picked those four, just so that you would understand, and I know that you all do. But um, just be excited about what our students do when they graduate, because we certainly are. Any questions? All right, TL's gonna come up and talk with you about the exciting budget stuff.
Well, I brought fireworks, but I'm not sure that's even enough to make numbers exciting. Ours is pretty much status quo, same thing you've seen and heard in past years. We're not asking for a tax increase, we haven't asked for one in a number of years. Um, we did add an additional cosmetology and nail technology program at the Dorchester location this year. We've added an additional ag position um, for the coming year, so that's new in the budget. We gave all eligible employees a step increase. Uh, not sure if the schools mentioned it, but um, there is a health insurance increase of eleven point eight percent for employers beginning January one, so we've had to add that into our budget for next year. And due to the wonderful growth of the county, we were able to put in three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for new programs, new and replacement equipment for vocational classes. The next page shows our budgeted revenues. These are the same categories you've seen year after year. The taxes are estimated at six point four million. We do collect just a few dollars in lab fees. The retiree insurance, multi-district career center funding, and PIBA payments all come from the state. Those are set by the state. Interest revenues are up a little bit, finally. We will get some money back from District Two. They fund half of the ag teacher that we have at the middle school there, District Four, excuse me. And miscellaneous revenues for a total revenue of seven point one million. The next screen is our budgeted expenditures by program. I'm not gonna go through all those numbers, same categories you see every year. Total expenditures are seven point one million, so we do have a balanced budget. The next slide is just a pie chart of the expenditures by program, and you'll see the big right half that's blue is our vocational program. So right at half of our budget goes directly to fund vocational programs. The next biggest is uh, operation and maintenance, and then after that is administration. And then we do get a little bit of state and federal funding, not much, as you can see here. We have uh, career and technology ed funding from the state of fifty-six thousand. This has to be spent on equipment for vocational programs. We receive state industry certification funds. This is um, has to be spent on anything that helps to certify the students in industry certification. So we pay for their exams and study material to get them certified. And then we receive federal Perkins funds, and we spend that on professional development for our instructors, and then student competitions, such as all those gold winners that Jennifer talked about, uh, their trip to Atlanta, and um, will be funded through the federal Perkins funds. And that is all I have, unless y'all have some questions.
Mr. Chairman, unrelated, Tommy Lynn, wh- when did you start at the county in finance?
I started at the county in two thousand five, I believe it was.
Dorchester County?
Mm-hmm.
Gosh.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I know, it's a trick question. Nineties, nineties. Somebody threw twenty years on the table, I was gonna say, I'll take your twenty years and trump it right there.
Was it that long ago?
She was with the county finance when yours truly was starting out as a youngster many years ago. And you haven't aged a bit, it's amazing.
Oh, my goodness, well, thank you, thank you. I was with y'all for ten years, and I've been here for eighteen.
There you go.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question? Thank y'all very much. Next one, the agenda got a public hearing and recommendation for a second reading of the Dorchester County budget ordinance in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, uh, five, and ordinance to bank appropriations for the county government, education, and fire protection purposes for Dorchester County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, levying taxes and payments thereof, and to provide for the expenditure and set taxes and other revenues coming to the county. Uh, anyone who would like to speak on this, I'll give you three minutes, come up and give your name, address, and I wanna open the public hearing. Uh, doesn't look like anybody wants to speak, so I will close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, you got me.
No, no, I was, I was ahead of the game. Never mind, I recant my motion, we, we can't do that yet. I saw Harry getting ready to go to the microphone, so I just.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Counsel, if you will, uh, this is our second public hearing. This is also the time at which you would make a recommendation uh, for second reading, uh, that would cover not only the county's budget, but all entities receiving millage, including the DD four, DD two, and Career School.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We got a six, oh, and one absent vote. Any other motions?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor? Uh, we are now adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to call this May 20th Planning Development Building Committee meeting to order, and I will ask Councilman Crosby if he will lead us in an invocation.
I'm gonna catch him up. Me next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we praise you and thank you for the stay that you have made. Father, thank you. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. We appreciate you, Lord, in all the works that you've begun in us and the good works that you continue to do and should reveal to us through your creation and in and through one of each one of us, Lord. And I just pray that your Spirit come, be welcome in this space to lead and guide us in a manner that's glorifying and honoring to you and good for our community, Lord. Be welcome in this place. Come, Lord Jesus, it's in your holy and mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We have, according to my agenda, which is nice to see, we have one item on the agenda tonight. It is a public hearing and recommendation for second reading of rezoning request number 914 for Joe Owens and Randy Lowell to rezone 314.15 acres located at Highway 15 and I-26 near Harleyville. TMS number 004-00-00-028-033-034 and -063 from Agricultural Residential District AR to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. And I will open the public hearing with Ms. Reiderson.
Yes, sir. This is the one item that we have for your consideration tonight. This rezoning is comprised of four different parcels totaling just over 300 acres, about 314 acres. The property is located off Highway 15, up at the intersection of I-26 and Highway 15. This is in an area that our comprehensive plan already is designated for employment mixed use. There's really nothing else going on out there. It's pretty quiet. So the request is to go from the Agricultural Residential District, which is a single-family residential agricultural district, to go to Commercial Light Industrial, which would allow for wholesale distribution, light manufacturing, warehousing, which is consistent with the employment mixed use district. There are some wetlands on the site. The developer is intending to leave most of those areas undisturbed, but they'll still go through the Technical Review Committee for all site development plans. Same with Access, which is currently proposed off Highway 15, yet they'll have to go through SEDOT to get those permits. Water sewer is not currently available, but plans are in place to extend up this way to provide for this site. So everything's working its way up here to be able to develop the site. So we reviewed it at staff level. We supported it, went to Planning Commission at their March meeting. Planning Commission recommended approval.
If anyone has any comments, public comments they'd like to make on this, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. None appearing, I will close the public comments. I will close the public hearing and the public comments.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion we approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to add, just from a clarity standpoint, if everybody looking at the map, sometimes we look at our maps here, they don't always look as obvious to us, but that is on the northeast corner of I-26 at 15. The area surrounding immediately that interchange currently is general commercial. I think the only thing that I would add to the CLI and to the CG, and I still, I've asked for this previously, and I still want us to certainly look at doing some limitations from a standpoint of any sort of high levels of residential in certain areas and put some physical limits on, hey, general commercial should be general commercial. CLI should be CLI and not just a placeholder for general residential because it currently says that. So that's the only thing that I would ask, just to continue to, let's not forget that as we go forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Is there another motion?
Motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.[1688.65]
We got three items on the agenda today. The first one's request for approval for new water and sewer service for the Welch Track, and 150,000 square feet of commercial space in the town of Ridgeville. I got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh vote. Next is request for approval of new water and sewer service by Finn Law Development Company LLC for Pepper Tree Subdivision consisting of 32 homes, TMS number 172-00-00-010 near the town of North Charleston. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh vote. Last on the agenda is request for approval for new sewer service by Edify Holdings LLC for a mixed-use development, TMS number 171-00-00-074 in the city of North Charleston off Dorchester Road between River Bluff Parkway and Netherby Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions on this one. I don't know if it was just in my packet or if it was in general, but there was like a void, I didn't see a map. The mixed-use side of this doesn't, I didn't see an identification of what it actually exists. What, I mean, how many, it's mixed-use, so it's some residential, some apartments, townhouses, some commercial. And I couldn't tell from that what it is. Obviously, it's in the city of North Charleston, but if it's in Dorchester County and they're coming to Dorchester County schools and using Dorchester County water and sewer, I kind of would like to know at least that. I don't know if they're in here to be able to tell me that. Okay. Because I just didn't see it, and I looked in the packet and I didn't see a link for that one, so.
So this particular TMS number is approximately 11.36 acres, and the zoning on it is B1 Limited Business. So it actually sits on Dorchester Road, and it's a part of the continuation of the commercial development in that area.
Thank you. That's all we need, thanks, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven oh vote. Do I have any other motions?
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now adjourned. We'll read adjourn in five minutes. This time, I'd like to call to order the May 20th, 2024 Dorchester County Council meeting. At this time, will you please stand as Councilwoman Holman leads us to the invocation and continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Bow our heads, please. I pray for this council meeting this evening, that we, that the councilmen and women have the wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on each item set before them. May every decision be righteous and in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost. Thank you, Jesus, and we ask this in your Son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the May 6, 2024 meeting as presented.
Second.
I got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda is, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Holman. I'm sorry. Councilwoman, Councilman Hearn, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor to present for councils consideration Resolution Number 24-11, reads as follows, State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, to recognize and honor Dr. Mary Thornley, President of Trident Technical College, upon the occasion of her retirement after 50 years of extraordinary service and leadership. Whereas, Dr. Mary Thornley has dedicated 50 years of her life to the field of education, with the last 33 years serving as the esteemed president of Trident Technical College. And whereas, President Thornley's visionary leadership has transformed Trident Technical College into the largest technical college in South Carolina, with enrollment growing from 79, 1997 and 1991 to over 13,000 in 2023. And whereas, President Thornley's unwavering commitment to education, economic acceleration, and inspiration has been instrumental in the Low Countries' continued growth and success. And whereas, Trident Technical College offers a diverse range of courses, including aeronautical studies, business, hospitality, manufacturing, nursing, radio, and television broadcasting. Thanks to President Thornley's timeless efforts, excuse me, and whereas, her outstanding achievements have garnered numerous accolades, including the Order of the Palmetto, the Joseph P. Riley Leadership Award, the Shirley B. Gordon Phi Theta Kappa Presidential Award of Distinction, and the South Carolina Association of Technical College Commissioners CEO Award. The Association of Community College Trustees has twice recognized her exceptional leadership with the CEO Award in both 2009 and 2019. And whereas, in 2018, Trident Technical College Area Commission voted to rename the college's main campus in North Charleston to honor Dr. Thornley for her years of service and leadership. The college's original and largest campus is now officially known as the Thornley Campus. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Dr. Mary Thornley's retirement marks the end of an era at Trident Technical College, where her distinguished leadership has left an indelible mark on the college community, inspiring countless students, faculty, and staff, and her legacy will inspire generations to come. Be it further resolved that Dorchester County Council recognizes Dr. Mary Thornley with deep gratitude and admiration upon the occasion of her well-earned retirement, and wishes her continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Adopted this 20th day of May, 2024 by S. Todd Frittle, Chairman, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council.
So moved.
I got a first and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we had the privilege to speak to Dr. Thornley live and in person when she presented the budget for the last time. That was last week, wasn't it? Wow. And just, you know, I think this statistic is still good. Just, it's an astonishing percentage of graduates from Dorchester schools have gone on to do at least one semester at Trident Technical College. And it's just, you know, Dr. Thornley very much is a visionary and just was a great leader for that college, and, you know, we were closely aligned with them and will continue to be, and, you know, it kind of culminated, Mr. Ward, with the Dorchester County campus of Trident Technical College. So just, again, thank you, Dr. Thornley.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like, you want to go ahead?
Got Byers, go ahead.
Okay, let's just see if you got it right. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda at this time for a resolution to honor Joyce Davis for her 70th birthday.
Second.
We had a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'd like to recognize County Administrator, Mr. Jason Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, a resolution to recognize and honor Dr. Joyce Washington-Davis on the occasion of her 70th birthday on June 8, 2024. Whereas, Dr. Joyce Washington-Davis, a native of Orangeburg County, South Carolina, has dedicated her life to education, community service, and uplifting others. And whereas, she is beloved, she is the beloved daughter of Mrs. Beulah Washington, and the late George C. Washington, and the proud graduate of Orangeburg Wilkinson High School. And whereas, Dr. Davis's educational journey led her to South Carolina State University, where she achieved not one but four degrees, a bachelor's degree in English in 1977, a master's degree in English Education, an educational specialist degree in administration and supervision, and a doctorate degree in education. And whereas, in 1977, she met the love of her life, the late Councilwoman Willie R. Davis, and together, they were blessed with her daughter Jasmine Willetta Davis. And whereas, Dr. Davis is an esteemed member of Emmanuel M. Church in Cope, South Carolina, where she serves as a steward pro temp, class leader, young peoples and children's division, YPD director, female chorus member, and a devoted member of the Women's Missionary Society. And whereas, she has served as a dedicated teacher and administrator in Collin County School District, and as Director of Student Support Services in Dorchester School District Four. And whereas, Dr. Davis's commitment extends beyond the classroom, as she actively participates in numerous educational and civic organization, including Xi, I guess this is, am I saying that right? Xi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa, Alpha, Alpha Sorority, which she would beat me up for messing up.
Yes.
Yes. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP St. George Branch, the Trinity Chapter Number Three Order of Eastern Stars. She also contributes her time and expertise to the Dorchester County Foster Review Board 1B, the Upper Dorchester Civic Organization, and the South Carolina Education Association. Dr. Davis's warm spirit and dedication to service have made her a valued member of the St. George Rotary Club, and whereas her passion lies in helping others succeed, and her model, "There is no failure, only feedback," inspires those around her. Every day is a day of Thanksgiving, so be the reason someone smiles every day. The only key for success is to never, never give up and put God first. Now, therefore, be it resolved, on this special day, we celebrate Dr. Joyce Washington-Davis, a beacon of kindness, wisdom, and resilience. May her life continue to be a source of inspiration, and may her smile brighten the lives of all who cross her path. Be it further resolved that upon adoption of this resolution, the original shall be presented to Dr. Joyce Washington-Davis in a copy filed in the permanent records of Dorchester County, South Carolina, adopted this 20th day of May, 2024, S. Todd Frittle, Chairman, attest Tracy L. Langley, Clerk to Council.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, request to address council. At this time, we'll invite those who have signed up to address council. As your call fours, please state your name and address, and you'll be given just three minutes to speak. First on the agenda is Suzanne Chastain. Right up here. Yes, ma'am, give me your name and address, too, please.
Suzanne Chastain, Somerville, 109 Pheasant Lane, Somerville. It's just off Trolley Road. We've lived in that house since 1977, at which time we had nothing but trees behind our house. Right now, we have parking lots and dumpsters. Thank you very much. My topic is development, in case you can't guess. As we all know and can see, there is rampant development all around us. I live in Somerville, and our traffic has become ridiculous. It took me 30 minutes tonight to get from my house off Trolley Road to Jetburg. 30 minutes. Council members, you are our representatives, and I, and seem to have no qualms about giving developers whatever they ask for and desire. You do not require services to all these new homes. You do not require developers to pay impact fees per home to provide for fire protection, new roads, services to additional thousands of people, for schools, and to educate the new students. Developers are Developers are not required to leave natural trees, mature trees, in their neighborhoods, as the older neighborhoods in Somerville have. And if you notice, they don't flood, like the new neighborhoods do, which have zero trees. They plant a five-foot tree, and in maybe 25 years, it'll be a big tree, maybe. Other basic requirements for conservation aren't met. When I was growing up in Kentucky, every year in elementary school, we were required to write an essay about soil conservation, water conservation, wildlife conservation, and forest conservation. Each year, it was a different topic, and as a result, we had conservation ingrained in our minds. The new owners of these homes wonder why their lot fills with water and their septic's don't work. Take a guess. It's because they don't drain properly. We're in the Low Country, and what about Low do we not understand? We may be in Somerville 40 to 50 feet above sea level. Some homes are much lower. Therefore, there's a problem. And especially out 61, and Homestead, our homecoming, the new development out 165, they're going to have problems. They clearcut all those trees, and there's nothing.
I appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Barbara Richardson.
Barbara Richardson, 129 Brown Deer Run, Ridgeville. I am here concerning, to ask, to request the council to ask the tract that is being, the Welch tract, to ask the developers to cut back on their 550 homes that they are planning to build. According to the Dorchester County, South Carolina government website, the Ridgeville Givens area of the county between the Four Hole Swamp and Cypress Swamp is currently experiencing tremendous growth pressure. The area is characterized by large tracts of land, rural homesites, and limited infrastructure. According to the Water and Sewage of Dorchester County ordinance, that it says that governs both water and sewage uses for Dorchester County, it also acknowledges the unprecedented growth in population. And the third paragraph says, whereas, the sanitary sewage services and water surfaces provided by Dorchester County are necessary to promote harmonious living conditions and to maintain, that means that's already there, quality standards of living for Dorchester County residents. The Ridgeville Givens Area Growth Management Plan that was developed by Dorchester County and adopted in 2021 acknowledges that because of the unknowns and development projections, careful consideration needs to be given to appropriate densities and locations of developments. Giving the size of this area, the need to minimize future maintenance requirements should also be a factor when considering sewer line extensions with given considerations. Also, on water. First paragraph in water says, water is severely limited in this area. Outside the town of Ridgeville, there is very limited capacity available, and only a certain amount of development can be accommodated. As this project will open up the area development, residential rezonings should not be allowed until the Lake Marion Regional Water Line takes place. So, it is my request to the council, I ask, please, sirs, reconsider this request for approval of new water and sewer service for the Welch track, because it comes in addition to many, many other projects that are there and in place in Ridgeville right now. And we don't want to look like Kane Bay.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda, Mr. Ward, do we have any items of correspondence?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to recognize Ms. Allen Hay for Budget Officer Presentation on April 2024 Monthly Budget Report and Capital Projects Update. How you doing today?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. I'm presenting the budget report for April 2024. For general fund, we have budgeted revenue and expenses of $84,907,569, with revenue coming in at $70,366,614, and expenses at $69,347,957. Items to note, as of March 15th, all uncollected taxes have been transferred over to delinquent tax. We are experiencing a 95% collection rate for property taxes. Still to be recorded will be three months of vehicle, homestead, FLO, and any residual property taxes that the treasurers hold to be able to handle refunds through the last quarter of the year. Licenses, business licenses are going through renewal. All business licenses expired on April 30th, so they're still going through that process. They have the month of May without penalty to go ahead and get theirs renewed, so we will see continued revenue coming in there. Intergovernmental revenue, still only two quarters have posted from the state, so we still will see additional revenue coming in on that line item. Across all funds, interest income has exceeded budget, you know, with interest rates have gone up, so we reap the benefit of the interest income. And then, fund balance on the revenue side, we're not anticipating that we're going to need any of that fund balance, because revenue is exceeding budget for expenditures. On the expense side, just to note, and we spoke about this, and I'm sure it's discussed every budget presentation, is that there was a transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund and Reserve Fund. That happened in January, and so that $2.9 million that was transferred is per fund balance policy, once we exceed our 40% fund balance reserve requirements. And then, overall, on the general fund, expenses are running below budget. For the library fund, they have a budget of $4,808,682, with revenue of $4,809,849, and expenses of $3,418,672. Again, same thing with tax revenue. We'll continue to see some additional tax revenue coming in. On the expense side, just one item to note, Ashley River Library, they obviously are planning to open. They have gone ahead and hired their staff, so you will see in the next couple of months some increase in personnel, but we are still expecting their personnel line to be 12% below budget. On the capital fund, they have a budget of $13,853,745, with revenue of $24,633,199, and expenses of $11,286,487. We spoke about the general fund doing the transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund. For that piece, it was $2.5 million. As well, as has been discussed before, there were three properties that were sold. That was for $13 million in Windy Woods and Pine Hill Industrial Park. And on the expense side, the expenses are running below budget, but you do have the 3.75 land sale proceeds for the purchase of Old Beach Hill Road in March. On the American Rescue Fund, nothing significant to note at this time. We continue to monitor to assure that all funds are obligated by December 31st, 2024, as required. On the fire fund, we have a budget of $10,197,008, with revenues of $8,996,803, and expenses of $8,242,394. There was a small use of fund balance that was budgeted, which was for a PO that carried over from fiscal year '23. It's not anticipated that they will need to use fund balance for that. Their revenues have exceeded their budget, and expenses are running below budget. On the water and sewer fund, we have budgeted revenue of $51,635,582, with revenues of $34,843,326, and expenses of $44,494,319. The charges for services are currently on track to exceed budget. Use of fund balance, and you're going to see this for both water and sewer and impact fees. They typically will have a fairly large use of fund balance, which is the carryover of projects from year to year. You're going to see corresponding expenses under construction and water and sewer revenue bonds that, you know, ties to those figures. Those will continue to carry over until those projects have been completed. The water and sewer revenue bonds expenses are being funded by that lower wastewater treatment plant revenue bond that was issued in 2023. On the water and sewer impact fees, you have budget of $31,619,354, with revenues of $6,351,014, and expenses of $5,171,815. Again, as I spoke about, you're going to have that carryover from year to year with the projects. You're seeing the corresponding use of fund balance, as well as the budget down below for those projects. For stormwater, you have a budget of $11,157,333, with revenues of $5,637,557, and expenses of $3,871,933. We budget historically a 3% growth in this line item for charges for services. They are coming in slightly higher than that, which we've experienced throughout the county as far as, you know, tax revenues being slightly higher than that 3% growth. You're going to have the same thing with use of fund balance in stormwater projects. The other thing to note on the debt service, there will be a journal entry that's prepared. There was a prepaid for fiscal year '25. They pay their debt service on a monthly basis, and it's a prepaid, so we'll move it over to the correct fiscal year, so that will correct itself. On the solid waste fund, we have a budget of $9,505,797, with revenues of $10,003,560, and expenses of $6,107,810. Item to note is for charges for services. That line item includes user fees, as well as waste manage, host, excuse me, waste management host fees. We've experienced an increase in haulers bringing in to landfill from outside Dorchester County, so that variance that you see is the additional revenue that's getting posted because of that. And expenses there are running below budget. Are there any questions?
Any question?
Good evening. I have the April slash a little bit May project update for you for general construction. So for Ashley River Park Phase Two, which consists of, you know, originally the dog park and then the new shelter over by the pond, we've had the concrete near the dock and grill pads have been poured as of early May. The electrical panel's been set. We're waiting on Dominion Supply Power, and we anticipate completing the project by the end of May. We're waiting on our signage for the shelter to mount the electrical panel to the back. On Ashley River Library, many of you saw that at the program this past Friday. I heard great things. I'm excited about that. We have minimal punch list items related to just some as-bills and different things like that to completely close this out, to get our CO, to be able to have our ribbon cutting on June 4th as scheduled. Then, we have the connector project. We're still waiting on some rough pricing for that project to be able to determine if our budget is currently sufficient to fund that. On Edisto Lakes, we recently received the revisions to the initial concepts from STANTEC based on the comments received at the Parks and Rec Commission back in December. We're going to be reviewing those internally this week to receive staff comments, which then will further pass on for administrative and council comment. On the EOC, that building is substantially complete. The EMD staff have taken occupancy. They had dispatch cut over, I believe, midweek last week. They did excellent job on that, and they certainly deserve some kudos for how smooth that went. We have a few items we're working through on that project, and we hope to resolve that so that everyone is happy and comfortable in that building. So, on HHS, which is the Biolo renovation project, that is currently facing minimal delays outside of the transfer switch, which we've mentioned on the past few reports. The parking lot will be repaved in mid-May, which parking lot was repaved last week. It should be striped this week. That'll be done. It looks really great on that side of the parking lot. There are also issues with the stormwater utility closeouts that our project team, oh, I'm on the wrong line, I apologize. So, we're working on the interior finishes now. We have temporary power in progress, and we are on track for substantial completion by the end of August. We should have Public Defender in there about mid-July. So, we're on track with our goals there. On Jetburg Fire Station, ADC has completed a site assessment, anticipated the proposed property, and we're currently waiting on next steps for the geotechnical survey. On the LEC renovation, which has been a long time coming, it is, we are finally in Phase Four. They reconvened after getting the green flag to start Phase Four with a demolition, which consists of the bottom floor and a portion of dispatch, now that dispatch has moved over. We are anticipating, I believe, being out of there probably by September, for being realistic with the work involved. On the 500 North Main Street project, county staff participated in planning exercises for the design of the new county services center to be constructed on site. Staff have reviewed and provided feedback on the final programming, and we will start working through schematic design next. On the new coroner's office, the initial job proposal and final plans have been received from TUCO, and I reviewed those with Gordy and TUCO, and then I'll also review that with staff for feedback before we finalize and sign a proposal for services to construct the facility. On Oakbrook Tiff Sports Complex, we still have birds, so those birds are going to be there for a little bit longer. They've been flying the drone periodically, just to make sure they're still there. I keep waiting to wake up to a picture of them not there. So, until then, we really don't have much of an update. I'm working through submittals and looking at the specs for this project, and we're hoping to potentially hold a groundbreaking ceremony late June, just because we don't have to bother the birds to have some shovels. So, on Pantrace, the site work's still in progress for this project. We have vertical construction going on. We received the, I believe it's probably our third round of revisions on the playground, just to make sure we really hit the mark, to make sure this was completely inclusive for everyone on this playground, which has taken a lot of work from, you know, myself, Austin. He's been a great help with getting everything on there. And I know last week, they were out there working on the disc golf course design and layout in the hot woods. They blessed me, and I did not have to go, so I received the update, though. So, thank you for that. And on Ridgeville Library, I have no update at this time beyond the MOU that is previously approved. On the St. George Veterans Facility, a design proposal has been requested from several firms based on the feedback received from staff and council that would be utilizing the facility. On Summers Corner Fire and EMS, the final set of plans have been received and are working with Design Build on the final proposal. I meet with them later this week to review that. And on Somerville Branch Library, the county's identified a few potential parcels on Gum Street, which are under internal review. No further update is available at this time. On Swan Drive Park, kayak launch is substantially complete. We onboarded Terricon for site and material testing. The site work will begin after receiving the feedback necessary from Terricon, and they'll be mobilizing this week to go out there and do the testing. On the Troy Night renovation project, we are finally in Phase Four. On the Troy Night renovation project, we are finally in Phase Four, which is the second floor offices, which began in April, and they are estimating they will be out of that building by the end of May, which is great. And that is it. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jordan.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
First project, the bridge replacements projects. We have received the public information plan and the traffic management plan. We reviewed those. We were provided comments back to the contractor. So we'll start having some community meetings for those projects to talk about schedule costs, that sort of thing here in the next couple of months. First Bend and Rice Mill, you know, I'm still waiting for that September timeframe to submit for the RIA grant, so there's not a whole lot going on with that between now and then. Maple Street widening, the drainage installation continues. There are a few more minor utility conflicts that they're working around, but they're proceeding with work as scheduled. The first lift for the new realigned Maple Street is down, and once they get, I think there's two more lifts they have to do. Once that's complete, they'll be able to open that intersection, but they've got the foundations for the traffic signal poles there. And so, you know, that's going to be a huge improvement once that intersection gets open. Even the overall construction will still be going on, but that intersection itself will be open. So that's what we're pushing for right now as our next milestone. Sawmill Branch Trail, preliminary plans are done. We're working with water and sewer right now. We're trying to avoid a 30-inch force main that's in the shelf, so we're working through those details right now. But we have selected a pedestrian bridge. That may change based on the design. If we have to end up shifting the alignment of it, we might have to go through to a more of a built-in-place type bridge, but we're still working those details out. But as soon as I have more information, I'll share it with council. SC-27 widening, the condemnation packages have been submitted to legal, and we've also submitted the wetland mitigation credit purchase agreement and, well, that, just that, to administration and legal for review and approval. So this allows us to purchase wetland credits because we're impacting a certain amount of wetlands for the project. And then Wallace-Hackaman Turn Lane, sidewalk and curb have been poured, signal poles or signal foundations in, and then they're working on the fine grading for the turn lane. I haven't been out there today. I think substantial completion was supposed to be today. So we are looking at, our next step will look at weather delays, and the contract allows the contractor to have additional time due to weather or utility delays. There's no utility delays on this project, so it'd be strictly weather delays. So we're evaluating that right now, but they have stated that they feel that they're going to be done pretty quickly, so I appreciate their confidence. We'll keep pushing them with that.
Any questions?
Jason, just to, I don't think you hit on rough timeline on Sawmill Branch Trail. I know you're working on the bridge, you said. I mean, you got any kind of idea? I get asked a lot, so I'm just curious.
The core permitting could, that in itself could take a year.
Have we submitted that yet or no?
We've, they've received the preliminary, but they really don't look at it until they get the whole thing. But I can touch base and check the schedule again and see when we're going to submit that model to them.
Okay.
But I would imagine that's probably going to be a 12 to 18 month.
That's our longest, I mean, this is not a super complex project, right? I mean, so.
Well, it is because they're having to use the model for the Berlin Myers Phase Three. So that's what's complicating it is the, some of the mitigation efforts that were done as a part of that project were affecting. So we have to go back and, the good thing is we already have the base model created, so we just have to manipulate the model at this point. So it's an easier process than what they went through for BGM Phase Three.
I sure hope so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Harper, how are you today? I thought you had something exciting for us.
You know, I live the dream every day because I work for Dorchester County. On the morning of May 20th, 1927, at 7:52 a.m., the Spirit of St. Louis took off from Roosevelt Field located on Long Island. Thirty-three and a half hours later, Charles Lindbergh landed in Paris, becoming the first person to fly across United, across the Atlantic Ocean solo. That's a little date in history today. I started to go with the whole thing about Levi Strauss getting the patent for jeans, but decided to overlook that one. Phase, the second phase of Shred Capes in Barret Street, SCDOT has returned the comments regarding the encroachment permit, and we're working to address those comments and make the necessary plan revisions. For the Coniflow Well, project, the project needs, we thought we had that project complete, but we discovered that there was problems with the well in terms of, there was almost like a neck and bore hole. And so we're actually putting in a brand-new casing in that, in that well since we're there and have the contractor actually mobilize. For DC Regional Water Interconnection Phases One and Two, engineering design has begun. We have 30% plans drafted, which we use to identify the required easements. Easement exhibits have been created, sent it to our acquisition agent, and we have already requested use of condemnation or, as they prefer, eminent domain to acquire those easements if required. For DSS, the pump station for force main, Phase One of that portion of project has actually had a bid closing really May 9th of this month. This is for the construction of approximately 3,617 feet of 30-inch line and 133 feet of 20-inch force main and associated pertinences. This also will include 855 feet installed, to be installed by horizontal directional drill. Square is being performed along Orangeburg Road between Cone Lane and MNC Drive. The reason that this particular phase was selected is we've had numerous breaks on that line on Orangeburg, and so we decided to attack that first. For the Edisto Travel Council elevated storage tank, final pay application has been submitted for processing, and that project will be closed out. For the Hollyville Pump Station enforcement reversal, our engineers have drafted the proposed water enforcement alignment to kind of continue to coordinate with multiple property owners to locate the final site for that pump station. For Highway 15 to the 26 interchange, we're working to also identify a new pump station location. We're working with Inmark, who has some property that they're looking for service, and so we're having discussions with them to maybe locate that pump station site near them, and we're obtaining additional survey within that Inmark site. We've actually drafted, the remaining water and sewer force main alignments have been drafted. For Highway 178 waterline extension, project is under design, permitted applications and specifications are being drafted. For the Lower Dorchester wastewater treatment plant expansion to 16 MGD. As you probably remember, on April 26th of this year, we have actually obtained two MGD of additional capacity, six months ahead of schedule. The contractor also is scheduled to form and pour basemats for the wall sections for the Oration Basin, and they are now beginning foundations for the maintenance building, the Ras pump station building, and the blower building. So that site is being transformed significantly. Maple Street relocates, contractor's working to install a force main. All required easements for the gravity main has been obtained. Contractor's expected to start the gravity installation once the force main is near completion. For Pine Tree Site Extension, we had to do some additional survey that we've attained and did a design modification as we're shifting the lines a little bit. For the Poplar Grove Red Top Project, engineers working to address all the comments in the various permitting agencies and working to finalize the sewer easements, which actually have been finalized. For Pump Station 115 Upgrade, waiting to receive the owner manuals and require spare parts so that we can process that final pay application and close out that particular project. Pump Station 72 Upgrade, Asher Ridge High School, contractor's working to form and pour the wet well wall sections. Odor control and generator pads have been placed. If you haven't taken a ride by to see the big hole, it's still impressive. We're actually out of the hole and actually working on the slab now. So it's worth a trip if you're looking for something to take a look and see. For the Reed's Real Well Rehabilitation, we're working on closeout of that project. Shaded Grove to 178 Area Pump Station Force Main, those projects are under design. New pump station has been finalized, incorporated to the plans now that the owner landowner has agreed to sell. Summer Haven Water Line, we should have the wet well delineation completed this month and working with Charleston Water to finalize our connection details. Our project hopefully to be out to bid soon. Sweetgrass Subdivision, we've got some requirements for encroachment permit by our friends from Public Works, and once we satisfy those requirements, we'll have that project out to bid also. Waterline replacement in the Pepper Ridge area, design is currently ongoing, being performed by staff. We're working on the draft permit applications and specs. Water main extension from DC to the DC Career Technology Center in Hollyville Middle and Elementary School, waiting to receive those meter details from Hazen and Sawyer to be inserted into plans. Actually, as of today, we've got those, and they're actually being inserted as we speak. Winding Woods Project, Reach contractor is waiting to get water so they can test that tank. The Reach contractor has utilized Smart Ball technology to identify several leaks that were still in the line, and as of May 6th, there were two leaks. I understand that the contractor's identified those two leaks and is working to repair them now. So hopefully we can get the Reach contractor signed off and get water flowing to the Winding Woods area. And then for the Willand High School Force Main, we're working on permitting that project. So with that, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I was really kind of hoping that Mr. Harper was going to talk about the comment that I had in my newsfeed this morning. In 1873, two gentlemen were awarded a patent on this day to reinforce trousers with copper rivets. One of those gentlemen was, of course, Levi Strauss.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Next on the agenda, I want to recognize Ms. Kim Morganello, Senior Project Manager, Weston and Simpson in conjunction with Audubon, South Carolina, to give us an update on the Dorchester County Green Belt Master Plan.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. As mentioned, Kim Morganello, Senior Project Manager with Weston and Sampson, and I'm here to present the Dorchester County Green Belt Master Plan for your consideration. As we all are aware, Dorchester County is home to abundant and diverse natural resources. We have longleaf pine savannas, tidal marshes, bottomland hardwood forests, blackwater rivers, and a few superlatives of notes are trees over 1,000 years old at the Francis Beidler, one of the most pristine longleaf pine savanna tracks intact at Brosnan, one of the longest blackwater rivers in North America that remains undammed in the Edisto River. As we know, in 2022, a tax referendum was passed through ordinance 2216 that would cap at 33, will cap at $33 million for the purchase of green space. In 2023, through ordinance 2307, the Conservation and Green Belt Commission was established in the ability to hire a consultant. And in 2024, the consultant was hired, excuse me, in 2023, and in 2024, we are here to deliver the Dorchester County Green Belt Master Plan. I cannot emphasize enough, this was very, a highly collaborative project. Your Dorchester County staff remained very much involved throughout the project, particularly your planning department, GIS, and public information officer. The Dorchester County Conservation and Green Belt Advisory Commission was also highly involved as we met with them at least one time monthly, if not more, as well as yourselves, Dorchester County Council. And the consultant team, of course, is Weston and Sampson, and we were proud to have Audubon, South Carolina as our teaming partner. So our goals and objectives were to identify and catalog existing green space in the county, evaluate that existing green space and discern their valuable attributes, review and synthesize information on existing policies and ordinances, solicit and analyze community feedback, create a GIS prioritization matrix, and craft a physical master plan. So briefly, the timeline, this was about a seven-month project. We embarked on this in middle of October. We started with data collection and inventory of existing green space as well as our plan review. Moving into months two, three, and four, we mapped our existing green space and embarked on our public engagement, which included public surveys and workshops. Our GIS analysis was a robust four-month analysis, and then we went on to draft the plan and technical review of that plan, which really lasted throughout the seven months of the project. And here we are this evening with our plan delivery. So quickly on the plan review, the graphic on the right, to start for our data analysis, we reviewed 18 plans. These were statewide, regional, and local plans. We coded themes within those plans that were related to the objectives of the Green Belt Master Plan. So those were things like historic and cultural and scenic preservation, or public health, critical habitat protection, et cetera. We also during this time looked at the zoning and land development codes, and so we were looking for conservation techniques such as large lot zoning, density bonuses, stream, and wetland buffers. And to our, our community engagement component, we felt very strongly about this and wanted to cast as wide as a net as possible to gain as much feedback as we could from the communities in Dorchester County. In middle of November, we launched Survey One, which looked at perception and use. That lasted for six weeks. We had 650 responses. We had 95% of those responses indicate that they value green space. When asked why to conserve green space, they said indicated habitat for wildlife and natural beauty and clean air and clean water is the number one reasons. Nearly half of those 650 respondents visit green space at least one time per week, and then the barriers that they indicated for visiting green space was overcrowding and distance. Survey Two launched in February and ran to mid-March, and that was based on need. We had 532 responses. When asked what was most at risk if land is not conserved, the number one responses were water quality, wildlife habitat, and scenic beauty. When asked why they like living in Dorchester County, the number one responses were scenic beauty, proximity to outdoor recreation, and wildlife viewing opportunities. When asked what should be prioritized when deciding which land to conserve, wildlife habitat value and ability to manage water ranked as number one, cost ranked as the lowest. And throughout our surveys and our engagement sessions, a priority use that was indicated by the respondents was hiking, walking in the woods, and viewing wildlife. We also had two community engagement sessions. Thank you. We had county council there. We had our Dorchester Conservation Green Belt Commission members there, as well as county staff, and of course, the consultant team, Audubon, South Carolina, and Weston and Sampson. Here on this slide, it says that we had over 50 attendees. That's, I think, is a low number. Those were the 50 people that signed in, but those were open concept. We had February 8th, or open floor, I should say. February 8th, we hosted an engagement session at Rosenwald School in St. George, and February 13th was at Alston Middle School. And this was a wonderful touch point to educate the community on what the objectives on the project were and the process. It also gave us a great opportunity to ground truth. So this sessions, if you. So this sessions, if you were unable to make it, we had maps throughout the room, over five stations in which people were indicate where they observed flooding, where they go to observe wildlife, where they'd like to see a new park. And it was a lot of information we received from the community. And then getting into our GIS analysis, this was a, like I mentioned, a robust process for us. We have seven layers that are created into this prioritization matrix, which you can see listed here. We use these and layer these on top to create a prioritization matrix, which can be used for selection and approval of land to conserve. This was very much an iterative process. Below the the map there, you can see we had technical review from your Dorchester County staff, the Conservation and Green Belt Commission, as well as Audubon, South Carolina, the Nature Conservancy, Open Space Institute, South Carolina Office of Resiliency, Low Country Land Trust, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the SCDNR Conservation Bank. We had touch points with each of those organizations at least two times. And so the the results of this is a suitability index map. That is not what you're seeing here. That's actually a region, a prioritization region map. But the suitability index map is is basically green to red parcels in how they rank on that that suitability scale, 100 being the the highest possible score. This prioritization region map, though, is, I think, really interesting because you can compare it against what the South Carolina Conservation Bank is prioritizing. And you can also place it alongside the protected lands, which is what we did in the master plan. And the reason we thought that that was really important, too, is so that you can identify other funding sources to help bolster your tax referendum. And very important to note that if a parcel becomes available and does not fall within one of the priority regions, it can still be a good candidate that basically we would you would take that and apply it to the countywide suitability map to determine the score. And last, I'll say about the GIS analysis. We highly recommend maintenance on an annual basis as the layers that are part of the matrices, you know, do update on an annual basis. And we want to make sure that your data set is up to date in order to correctly inform your conservation goals. And those directions on how to do that are included in in the master plan. And so what does this look like from a process perspective? The Green Belt Project application and supporting materials would be submitted to county staff. That county staff would then take that to Conservation and Green Belt Advisory Commission for consideration. The commission would then use the framework and tools laid out in the Green Belt Master Plan to assess the proposed project. And then the commission would make a recommendation to support the proposed project or deny it for Green Belt funding from county with county support. That proposed project goes before yourselves, Dorchester County Council, for consideration. County Council considers the recommendation made by the commission. And then there, number seven, county council gives the final rule on the proposed project approval or denial. Two more slides, the the Conservation Toolbox. We certainly see this plan being one for implementation. This is not a plan that will sit on a shelf. The Conservation Toolbox gives you those tools. It includes a sample application packet, which could change as the needs of the program change, a green a green space glossary for consistency sakes, additional funding sources, again, for leverage of your funding, residential conservation practices, because we believe that conservation happens not just out there, but also in the home landscape. Policy tools and stakeholder task suggestions are also included. And so the final deliverable is the Dorchester County Green Belt Master Plan, which includes an introduction, existing conditions, data collection and analysis, implementation and administration in a appendancy section, which includes the Conservation Toolbox and the GIS methodology, among other things. Thank you. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I've got a couple. I've got a question and having read editorial today, maybe editorialize a little bit myself. One of the things I'm curious about from the standpoint of just from an informational standpoint, the projects will go, obviously, of the path we originally said and going through the Green Belt Advisory Committee first. If they're rejected, do they will council still have a chance? I guess my question is sometimes making certain that we agree that that rejection is is warranted. Is there something that was missed or not considered at that point in time? So is there a way to make certain that those also show up? Not necessarily for a vote, but to at least have us look at. I'm assuming with planning, looking at these as well, they'll know where some of the the biggest challenge here without pontificating too much, though I might here in a moment, is is pressure. Anyone that's gone before and sat through one of the Conservation Bank presentations, we recognize that the pressure on property is one of their hot map things. It's one of those pieces that are, and rightly so, incredibly important. Because if that is where the pressure is today and we don't respond, that pressure, it succumbs to that pressure and it turns into something that maybe we we thought have better use versus other areas. And that's the only reason why I ask that question about some of the pieces that may not show up in that final, hey, we approve this or not? Is that is there a process for that or?
So if just to make sure I understand, so if commission denies a project, council would still like to to see it?
At least see what it was, yeah. Is that still, is that an unreasonable request, I guess? I'm just kind of.
So the Conservation Green Belt Advisory Committee is a recommending body, just like Planning Commission is. So I envision that even if they recommended denial, it would still come forward to full council as the ultimate decision-making body.
And I, just to kind of, if you didn't see the, it's funny. Sometimes we hear about how truthfully accurate the reporting is. And the newspaper today, I suggest that this was probably backdraft, backroom written by an organization that didn't contribute anything to Dorchester County proposing or promoting this Green Belt referendum. And I don't have to say their names because we probably all know who exactly they are. Make a lot of noise, don't do a lot unless somebody's paying you somewhere. Or at least that's the appearance to me, in my opinion. They talk about spending land on conservation of sensitive lands that remain in private hands, I believe. And somebody out there that the the South Carolina Conservation Bank, which is probably the one of the first ones we would go to from a standpoint of matching funds. The chairman and I and some of the other councilmen have talked about $35 million is not enough. And it's actually 35 million, not 33 million, just to be clear there. But and our ability, we said from the get-go, we want to see 70 million, we want to be able to double it. Lofty dreams, realistically, we don't know that we ever believed we could do that. Maybe we can, but ultimately Conservation Bank being one of the first doors and banks to knock on to say, hey, can you help because you're here? And and we've done that, maybe not as successfully as we wanted to be recently, but we just got $1.4 million of state money added to a piece that clearly had zoned R4 along the Asher River with intense pressure. Got it for a few million dollars less than the appraisal price and then got another $1.4 million added on to the top of it. But they talk about the the sensitive lands in private hands ultimately. And I don't know, you know, how well, maybe there's some organizations out there that'll look at private lands. But certainly, public lands are easier to get folks to contribute to when you have that opportunity for using, number one, taxpayer money, number two, donations to help maintain and preserve that land. We've discussed the whole reason behind this all along and asking for this to be done, encouraging this to be done, questioning whether or not we could agree to get the voters in Dorchester County to do this, sitting around the conference room and and hoping we'd get 51% and turning out at 65% or thereabouts. We're I'm sure every one of us may have looked back and said, maybe we should have asked for 85 million or 95 million, whatever the case may have been. But but, you know, and then I look at, they they name the specific, the local state-recognized tribe here about Four Hole Swamp and Edisto River. And I would encourage CCL to work with those to help preserve some of their lands if they know how to collect that money and they know those lands and they don't meet that criteria here. Leveraging pots of money, that has always been the case. It's interesting that I, as I read this, I thought to myself, so did the guy, gal, whoever wrote this editorial, talk to anybody on Dorchester County Council? I don't know if anybody got the phone call. Because as I look at all the questions that he, he, she, they purportedly asked in this editorial, we could have answered every one of them because every one of the questions has answered and ultimately ended up in us appointing a Conservation Green Belt Bank and hiring Weston and Sampson and their very able partners. Wow, we hired the Audubon Society to help set this up, amazing. You know, that's because we weren't really concerned about green belt and preservation and conservation of some of this land. But again, I can't help but look at this thing and things that we've publicly stated over and over again. It mentions, for those of you on the Green Belt Committee, that you guys actually were supposed to come up with this plan. Not really sure that's how we planned it. I don't know that we ever expected you guys to do that. We appreciate you being on the committee. But we did hire the experts and and people with the experts to help come up with this plan to give us a guiding path to go forward that was transparent and public and discerning, quite honestly, I think is the best way for us to put that. Then the last thing that they they noted, and it was nice that they actually, I can't tell the tone of the article, the editorial, but should surprise no one that 650 people surveyed for the plan, highly valued green space in this order. Natural beauty, habitat for wildlife, clean air, clean water, protection from flooding, recreation, cultural and spiritual connections. I think we've already started from a standpoint of all of those and most specifically, natural beauty and habitat. We've seen that done, whether it was through the referendum or prior to in trying to conserve 296 acres in Miles Jamison that will be a park, but a rather natural park, not part of this referendum, but nonetheless, something that's been conserved. We've put our money, our actions, our hearts where we said we were going to in 2022 and before. And it's kind of insulting for these guys not to call a single person on this council. Or I'm assuming they probably didn't call, knowing these folks, they didn't call the Audubon because they didn't call the TPL or Low Country Land Trust or anybody else because they believe they are the be-all, end-all of conservation in the state. And they have a long way to go to understand what that really means. But I appreciate all the work you've done and appreciate the work that the Conservation Committee has done. And I'm sorry for pontificating there, but I had to.
You took the words right out of my mouth. It's really sad that the news media has become fake news lately, but I'll I'll stop there. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, first, I just want to say thank you all. This is a good job. Appreciate the work you're doing. You know, we, I I believe our record for trying to conserve what we can with what we have, which is our resources are significantly not what they should be. I think it stands pretty, pretty tall, and I appreciate what y'all are doing. The 35 million we've got to work with, it it's a start, you know, and we're going to have to leverage that. And we had a lot of help to get here. You know, we certainly had the Low Country Land Trust, Lord Berkeley, the the TPL people. We had a lot of help to get here. And then y'all coming in with Audubon really has put together a nice plan. And we've got a group of citizens involved trying to conserve paradise. And there is intense pressure that we see all the time, all the time. And trying to balance housing and economic development with what makes this place special is not easy. If I want an easy job, I'm going to run for State House. This is where this is where tough things are made. Sorry, did I say that out loud on the microphone? Sorry, Harriet. But at the end of the day, this is where the tough things, this is where the tough decisions are made, and it's not easy. So I appreciate y'all helping us to put a tool in toolbox to be able to manage this. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, any other statements, comments?
I want to follow up on something real quick, and I promise. The comments made earlier today about cutting down grand trees and folks, things like that, I encourage you to pick up 0413 and actually read it before you tell us what we are and aren't doing. Because there's a lot of things that we're doing that we're requiring and things that we have over time changed and required. I moved, I'm will be 61 in August. I moved to Somerville when I was 16 years old. My parents bought a house in Newington. And there were some little tiny live oaks in the backyard in 1978 that were little tiny trees that are still on some of these new lots where they have clear cut. And those trees are still on those lots. But I suspect that in 44 years, they will look like those neighborhoods that they all, everybody's so proud of today. But when they were built, those great big grand trees weren't sitting there because that was 44 years ago and they didn't look quite like that. And those ordinances are in place, smarts, complete streets are in place. We have done things that I can tell you, some of the counties in the upstate look at us and like, how did you manage to pull that off in this area, in this attitude, in this idea of where money is spent and where it's not spent? Can you save every square inch? Nope, because property rights are still important. There's no question about that. And are is this council, I believe, more than willing to look at the developers out there that are cutting down these trees and building these neighborhoods and paving these roads and looking to them and asking them, hey, what have you done for us from a standpoint of green space, open space? Certainly, ask that every time, and they're going to continue to ask that. And they're either going to participate and play, or we'll create a new ordinance, things that I hate to do. But if I have to put a new ordinance in place to require that, then that's ultimately what happens. But we're going to shake your hand to begin with and trust that you are going to be that person and be folks of your word to help contribute to what this county is with that that Tide Pod Leaf Canoe Kayak logo that we developed a while back that that it means something more than just a logo that we've stuck on a water tower somewhere. So again, I'll quit.
Thank you, man.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, I have Mr. Brian Haver, Assistant Administrator. Sorry about that, I got ahead of myself since we were doing all that discussion. I will entertain a motion to accept. Got a first and second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh vote. Next on the agenda, Mr. Brian Haver, Assistant Administrator for Community Services with this status update on the health clinic.
All right, sorry about that. All right, I just want to start out the presentation with a little bit of background about how we got to this point. If the council recall, back in 2019, we started working on developing a strategic plan. And at that time, in 2019, council had made a decision to make this project a priority, bringing and expanding healthcare services to the western portion of Dorchester County, the rural portions of the county. And this priority has been something that county council has directed administration to start working on immediately. And I can tell you, when I arrived in 2000, I guess it was 2021, this has been something that was basically put on my desk as a top priority for me to get working on. And we started working on identifying locations. And it was around 2020 is when the original jail, the main portion of the jail structure was demolished. And at that time, a decision was made, the back portion, which was built in 2001, which was the Women's Detention Center, it was in fairly good condition. And we were going to mothball that temporarily and take a look at adaptive reuse of that building, which was roughly about at that, at that time, we were saying it was around 8200 square feet. We hired an architect when I started with the county. The architect went out with the understanding they were to determine whether or not that portion can be repurposed for something to do with healthcare. And they brought back to council some initial feedback that yes, it can. It can definitely be repurposed. So from that point on, we were starting to work on a number of things, identifying funding sources. And we were lucky enough to get some funds through the American Rescue Program. And we, county council earmarked $1.5 million from that allocation of funds. And we also submitted a competitive grant application to the USDA through the Rural Healthcare Emergency Initiative Grant Program that same year. And we were lucky to bring forth a million dollars from that program. So the total funding, we have. So the total funding we have right now through grant sources is 2.5 million. What we did two years ago, we started working on putting together an RFP to go out to look for a provider. And county council directed the administration to put a partnership together with the town of St. George, which we did. And we met, I believe it was about three times, discussed scope of work that we wanted to put in the RFP. And through that process, we also developed a survey that we went out to the medical providers in the western portion of the county and sought input from them. What are the services that they're currently providing? What are the things that they would like to see that they can't cover? We also went out to the pharmacies and met with, through the survey, got input from them. What we were hearing back from the survey results was something that we had defined at that time was like an urgent care type facility, something that would be operated 24/7, seven days a week were some of the feedback that we were getting. So when we did put the initial RFP out on the street, we had a lot of that information in there. That's what we were looking for. We also wanted to have an inside in-house pharmacy. We also wanted to have radiology. We got proposals back and the proposals did not meet any of those criteria. And the main thing we were hearing from the providers was it was because the growth estimates that we were projecting at the time weren't here yet and they didn't, in order to attract a healthcare provider up in this area, they did not want to come up here and have a loss. So we went back and retooled it. We went into some discussions with some of the providers. MUSC was the provider that we brought before county council this past February. And through a scaling back of their, of the scope of work we were looking at, they suggested we start out small, take baby steps. They want to come in and do a primary care type operation. They will work five days a week, nine to five is what they suggested within the first couple of years. But they indicated a willingness, they shared numbers with us, they provided very detailed patient care counts they would need in order to ramp it up. And once the population starts increasing and they see that, they are willing to come back to the table and work with the administration to advance the primary care into something more. I fielded some calls based on the title of the presentation. We call it a healthcare clinic. Some folks suggested maybe we need to call that a center. There may be differences. I'm not 100% sure on all those definitions, but I can tell you the RFP that we got from MUSC calls it a clinic. So that's why we're calling it a clinic to abide by what MUSC has titled it so far. So with that as some backdrop, just wanted to, the first slide, we just indicate what some of the preventative wellness and primary care type, things that are going to be going on in the building. They are going to be providing telehealth as well as inpatient care. Occupational health and wellness services are something that the administration is going to be working on with MUSC to make sure they reach out to the commercial and industrial users in the area. And you can just go down through the list here. The point of care for all the lab testing, they are going to have a courier service coming in and taking that out. If we get big enough in the future with the population, they are willing to consider laboratory services on site. This thing is acting up for me. There we go. So this is the original layout for the women's detention center. When we went out and measured it, we actually came up, we had a survey or go out and take a look at the existing footprint. And what we were saying was 6,200 square feet. It's, it's actually 6,697 square feet, but the, how do you get the arrow? The cursor. The cursor was. What I wanted to indicate is the entrance to the building, when the sheriff's office was using this, there was a Sally Court that you could drive into. And what we're looking to do is to renovate the entranceway right here, but we're going to reuse the Sally Court as an outdoor waiting, patient waiting area. That was one of the things in our rural healthcare application in order to get the USDA funds. We had to address how we were going to deal with future pandemics. So what we thought of is maybe have an outdoor seating area, patient area that would have social spacing to deal with future pandemic issues. So we will have an outdoor waiting area. You will enter right here and there'll be an indoor waiting area in this section here, which I'll show on the next map. But the original layout, footprint is almost the same as what we're going to show on the next site plan. The cells were around the lower portion, the left-hand lower portion of the building. Those are going to be demolished, but we're going to end up putting the patient care rooms back in that area with some doctor offices. So here's the new configuration and you'll see here, this is going to be the outdoor waiting area, indoor waiting area. All the public spaces are identified in green. So the waiting area right here, you'll have some restrooms off to the, to the side there. All the patient care rooms are identified in green. The blue is going to be either nurses station or doctors' offices and reception area, but that's where all the medical staff is going to have access to. There is a component in the back here, which we're going to mothball, it's about 640 square feet. That is for future expansion as the population grows. Other services such as radiology or an in-house pharmacy could be located in that back area. And this front portion right here, we were lucky enough not to need all this space, but we did receive within the last year, a request from the South Carolina Department of Mental Health that if we can identify some space in the St. George area, they have a need to be a partner with us. So we're in the process right now of working out a lease arrangement, which we'll be bringing back to council to have 440 square feet occupied by the Department of Mental Health. MUSC is agreeable to this. They don't see a need for that area. They will enter, the folks will enter through the courtyard. This isn't working, but they'll enter through the courtyard and there is a separate doorway that will take you into the Department of Mental Health area. They will probably have office hours in the evening as well as weekends, depending on their caseload. There's two offices in there along with a waiting room. So they will have a separate entry and a separate key to get in there. And then this is just a summary chart, which shows you how the square footage is going to be broken out. MUSC will be occupying 5,254 square feet. That encompasses seven exam rooms, the indoor and outdoor waiting area, the reception space. And then ancillary space is the IT areas, the staff lounge. There's an outdoor seating area for the staff to go out as well as indoor. Future expansion that I mentioned, 642 square feet. Department of Mental Health, you see what they're going to be occupying and that's how we come up with 6,336 square feet. This is a site plan of the property. You'll see it's, it's surrounded by Railroad Avenue to the left here, Sears Street, and then Gavin Street. The building is right here and we are going to be redesigning the front entryway. We're going to have a canopy. What's proposed is a canopy walkway. We're going to have some planting surrounding the building. And the parking lot has recently been repaved under a separate capital improvement grant. I believe that was about a year ago. Based on some of the reorientation of the walkways, we are changing some of the parking stalls around, so they'll just be restripped. But there is 37 parking spaces on the property right now. Based on MUSC, I think that should suffice. We're, we're revisit, revisiting that in the lease right now to make sure that's still a good number. In the back of the building, we are going to create a driveway off of Gavin Street, which will be accessible for trash collection. We'll have medical waste and the trash in this area identified with an enclosure. And then we're also going to, MUSC has agreed to bring in a mobile MRI unit. That was something that they knew the community wanted. They can't permanently locate it here right now for financial reasons, but they are willing to four to five days a month, bring the mobile MRI unit in and they'll schedule all the appointments around that time it's on site. We are going to be installing a new concrete pad in the back, so it adheres to the weight load and we're also going to be updating or increasing the electric capacity because all the equipment in there runs off additional electric. So this is a perspective of the side and front elevations. The top drawing is what you see from Sears Street. And right now, the facade is just total blank combination. MU, MU, I can't remember. MUC wall? What is it?
CMU.
CMU. CMU wall. And what we're looking to do is to punch in seven windows and those windows will give access to the patient rooms as well as providing light to the doctor offices. And the lower drawing shows what the new canopy entryway will look like. In the front here, we have some mechanical units for, I believe it's the HVAC system. Those will stay and we're trying to cover that up with some decorative grill work. The signage will be at the top here. We're actually going to have two signs on there, one for MUSC and the other for the Department of Mental Health. So where we're at right now, this is the project schedule, which takes us all the way out to September of 2025. We are right in this area right here. We're in the process of ending our schematic design and we're moving into preparation of the construction documents. We are going to have to submit those drawings to both the state as well as the town of St. George. This project is in the town of St. George, so they will be reviewing and issuing the building permit. So we anticipate getting all that done by hopefully August of this year and either the end of August, beginning of September, right around Labor Day, scheduling a groundbreaking ceremony. And then construction permits will be issued and we'll be able to start construction. What we're proposing right now is a nine-month construction schedule, which will take us out through the end of May of next year. And then we have built in some time for bringing in all the FFNE, getting that set up, going through all the punch list items. So we're anticipating by the end of the summer, August, we'll be able to get everything done, have a ribbon cutting ceremony and hopefully by Labor Day, open up to the public. And then there's one other thing I just wanted to mention. This is a recent occurrence about three weeks ago. We were lucky enough to submit a request for funding through Senator Lindsey Graham's office, through a congressional directed spending request. We put in over $700,000 earmark and it was to help MUSC get the medical equipment and furniture that they need to get in and open up. Timing wise for this, we should know in early fall if this is approved. And should that go on the same cycle as in past years, we'll be able to start drawing down on those funds sometime in the spring of next year. So timing wise, it'll allow them to purchase this stuff and get it set up for the opening. Hence the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
But, Mr. Chairman, just to recap, and I think it's important to note that if I heard you correctly, you started this project, the process, two years ago, correct? I mean, kind of times out with the ARPA funds, but it's been underway. It's taken a while, but it's making progress and you know, obviously getting MUSC health involved is huge in that regard, but you know, thank you for sticking with it because there was a phase there and I'm not sure how far back it was when it looked like it may not happen, but looking much more hopeful now and you know, looking forward to Labor Day 2025. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, well said. Mr. Hearn and you know, hats off to the staff and Mr. Ward, I remember that very clearly in this chamber room, as a matter of fact, you, Ms. Hallman, champion, championing, you know, and delivering the urgency for this community and the need up here and just for, to see this come to fruition is just super exciting and thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and efforts on this. It's a tremendous value add for the citizens of the community here in the western end of the county. So keep up the great work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted my, my thanks to the staff because I know that they put a lot of work into this, to Mr. Ward and Mr. Haver. I know Mr. Haver has been working on this since the minute he got into working for Dorchester County. And I know that we talked about at first maybe having something a little larger and I understand the MUSC wants to grow along with us. So I'm delighted that they are coming because I know you put a lot of bids out and they are the ones that have said they'll take the challenge. So I am very grateful for that. I know the hours are from nine to five, but I believe those hours will expand as time go along. So I just want to thank you all. And I want to thank council for voting for this to make sure that this comes on this end of the county. And I want to thank the town for taking their portion as well to make sure that this, we get the permits that we need to do the bill. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing that can't be missed here, from a jail to a healthcare clinic.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Patient, oh, yeah. What'd you say, many patients are insane.
Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda, I want to recognize our county administrator, Mr. Jason Ward.
Mr. Chairman and council, if I may, I just want to say this, we understand the challenges with this clinic, but one of the reasons why Mr. Haver and our partners in Washington, our delegation has worked so hard to try to get the congressionally directed funding is to try to address early on the need for some very expensive radiology and other equipment. And if we are successful in doing that, that will allow MUSC to do more than basically bring the bus up here to do MRIs, et cetera. I would be remiss if I didn't say this, this was a strategic priority identified in 2019. And there were many days when we didn't know if we were going to have a partner. We were very blessed and fortunate with MUSC expanding its presence into Orangeburg to take over the Regional Medical Center as well as the facility in Santee, that they had said, hey, this was going to be our next area. But as Mr. Haver indicated, they did not believe the population was quite there to support it. So with the grant funding and council's commitment of the ARPA funding, I think we're very close to having something that this community can really be part of. Stolen the thunder, so I won't be repetitive in terms of the adaptive reuse, but I think it's an extraordinary opportunity that we have to really do something significant in this community. All right, obviously that wasn't under my time, but it had a little something on my mind. So the first item I have for your consideration is the third reading of rezoning request number 911 for Sean Legg to rezon point nine three acre located at 3915 Latin Road near Somerville, TMS number 1541101003 from single family residential district R2 to neighborhood commercial district CN. If I can. If I can, the property adjacent to it, third reading of rezoning request number 912 for Ben Bullock to rezone .47 acre located at 3919 Laton Road near Somerville, TMS number 154110101, also from Single Family Residential District R2 to Neighborhood Commercial District CN. I'd ask that you take these two adjacent properties together and give third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven no vote?
Final item I have for your consideration is the third reading of ordinance number, still to be determined, an ordinance to amend the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards, ordinance number 0413 is amended with respect to Article 9, Section 9.1, Agricultural Residential District. Article 20, Section 20.4.1, General Street Design Standards, Section 20.5.1, Sidewalk Provision Requirements by Zoning District, Section 20.6.2, Lighting Provision Standards, Section 20.10, Water Supply, and Section 20.12, Sanitary Sewage Disposal. I ask for third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I got a first and a second in discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I hate, I hate to do this. I talked to Chenus earlier, and so I don't like pulling surprises. I've got, just looking at this, I've got a couple of concerns that I really would like to vet out. We're on third reading, and we have pending ordinance doctrine already in place, so this is already being implemented, if my understanding is correct. I would like to ask some questions and just get some clarity on a few things. I'm not a no. I'm not ready to be a yes on the third reading just yet. I'd like a little bit more time, if possible. So I'd like to, and I never do this, but I'd like to make a motion to take this up at the next meeting, since we already have it under pending ordinance, just so I can ask some questions of staff and talk with some of y'all a little bit more. And I apologize for not doing this before now. So I just wanted to see if I could make a motion, see if anybody wanted to entertain that.
I'll second that for purposes of discussion, and here we are. No? No discussion?
I mean, I, I think the discussion was last, interesting, the last meeting, when I gave it a first for purposes of discussion, couldn't even draw a second. Something that we talked about for three weeks, or for at least three meetings. Sorry. You dug the hole, you get to stand in it. So, you know, we've talked about this thing. This thing has been discussed, beat with a dead horse. This is something that is being looked at across the Low Country. And this is an ordinance that we can pass tonight, as we've discussed for a couple months. And if we find that there's a problem with it, we can fix it, like we do every other ordinance that we find a problem with. This won't be the first time we've done this. But dragging this thing out because we weren't looking at it for the last three weeks, or the last three, six weeks, like we probably should have, is, I've looked at it. I don't need another two weeks to figure it out.
I love getting scolded by the teacher.
Always.
Your homework.
I understand that. My concern, there's just been some things that have come up in the last two weeks that have started making me think about this a little bit more, so I do have some concerns I'd like to vet out. And I'd like to get some questions answered about this septic, if we've got leachate problems in the Low Country, if we have some scientific analysis on that, I'd like to see some of that, just so that we can actually be able to talk about this a little bit more in depth. So that's just where I'm standing, totally fine if everybody else isn't. I mean, so that's my motion.
So, so the vote will be on tabling this for two weeks, correct?
Well, till the next meeting, whatever that is, two weeks.
Two weeks. Next, next meeting. All in favor of tabling this till the next meeting, say aye. Two. All against?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, this might be the first motion I've lost in 14 years.
Congratulations.
I feel, I feel like I really belong here now.
Mr. Chairman, prior to third reading, I would ask council to recall that you are excluding TMS number 118000067 as you did at second reading.
Okay, now we got a vote on, now we got a vote on passing third reading on ordinance. All in favor?
Having been scolded.
Oh, no, I'll pass it. Yeah. I'm not ready to vote against it, so. That's right.
Next on the agenda, next on the agenda is committee report from today, from the Budget, Finance, and Purchasing Committee meeting held on May 13th, 2024. We had a budget presentation by Trident Technical College, budget presentation by Dorchester Seniors, budget presentation by Children in Crisis, and a budget presentation by DD2, all with no millage increase. And we did have a public hearing on that day. So asked to, everybody approved, it was all approved for, agreed that the millage increase, no millage increase, and approved by council. You've heard, oh, so there's not a recommendation. Received for information. And then second, second, we had a committee report today on Budget Finance and Purchasing Committee at 4:00 PM, budget presentation by Dorchester School District 4, budget presentation by Dorchester Career College, and a public hearing on this, all with a zero millage increase, and all approved with a unanimous decision. You've heard the recommendation of the committee for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous. Next, I'd like to recognize Chairman Chenus for the Planning, Development, and Building Committee.
At 5:33 this evening, Planning, Development, and Building Committee met. We had one item on the agenda, and it was, I got to get this one, this one exactly right. So I'll go back to my page here. We had one item on the agenda, public hearing and recommendation for second reading, rezoning request number 914 for Joe Owen and Randy Lowell to rezone 314 acres located at Highway 15 and I-26, from Agricultural Residential AR to Commercial Light Industrial. It received unanimous approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the committee, all in favor? Today at 5:45, the Water and Sewer Committee met. We had three, three items on the agenda. We had requests for approval for Water Sewer Service for the Welch strike. We had requests for approval for Water and Sewer Service for Finlaw Development Company for Pepper Tree Subdivision, and requests for approval of new sewer service by EDFI Holdings. All of them were given a unanimous vote of approval. You've heard the recommendation of the committee on all three items, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think I caught seven, but it was unanimous. Next on the joint agenda is appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, at this time, reappoint Ms. Carol Duncan as a Trident Technical College Area Commissioner for Dorchester County.
Second.
We got a first and a second in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other appointments?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to appoint Mr. Sinclair Brown to the Senior Board.
Second.
We got a first and a second in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. At this time, I would like to appoint Mr. Ernie Blaylock to the Recreation Board? Boards of Recreation? Parks and Recreation. I'm looking at my park guy down there.
Second.
Got a first and a second in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other appointments? Any other motions?
Yes, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
We got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Have a great evening.